All right, with a core being present, and it being six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. All right, begin with the consent agenda. You have the agenda for approval of the minutes, the budget summary, bills, and then personnel.
The personnel is just the extra duty list, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well.
And resignation.
Okay.
And non-certified, we do have some custodial hires.
We have some non-certified hires.
Oh, I'm not, can we run them as just a general personnel on the consent without a name?
Yes, oh, well.
We do have the names.
We, you, I think they were on.
In your agenda.
In your.
Right, yeah, I'm just going off of this one here.
Okay. And that resignation, or two resignations.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it now, sorry.
You're good. Uh, that's good. Any questions concerning any of the consent agenda items? That I would receive a motion to approve as presented?
Shalom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then we'll go on to items for information, the administrative reports were in your folder.
Yeah, I'll update you on just a few things from an administrative side. The opening statements, just again, the C-SIP goals are there. District communications, we've got a plan for that, that I mentioned to you before. That was originally going to be on the June agenda, we're pushing that to July, kind of how we're going to incorporate Jenny Edwards' position moving forward. So you'll get that in July. Portrait of a Graduate, I know a couple of you are on that committee and that's going really well. And hopefully in August, I think we hope to have something for the board to kind of show you what that looks like for our district. And that's been a really interesting process and we've gotten some good feedback from the community on that. So look for a Portrait of a Graduate update coming up in August. The sped trailers, we did have one bid on one of the trailers for $3,000. So the one in the lower parking lot, the white one, we have sold that trailer. The gentleman that purchased that is working on how to transport that out. But we're hopeful that that will be sooner rather than later, the one on the closest to the student parking lot. We do not have anybody interested in the one closest to the street. We had a couple of leads on that, but nothing has panned out. So we're still looking at options for how to get that off of our campus.
Does he want a two-for-one special?
Yeah. Togo, man.
We'll offer, we'll offer at this point. We would, we would obtain all offers of getting that off of our property. Once those are gone, we're going to be able to chat that and make it some teacher parking for the parking that was taken away in front of the Hicks house. And then the other thing, the July meeting, I have a conflict on the eighth. So I'm hopeful that we could move that July meeting date to either July first or July 15th.
Where it works.
Anybody has any conflict with either of those dates?
May not be the panel of 15th.
I like the first. First is better for me.
Yeah, I prefer the first.
I need to talk to the calendar lady, I'm not sure, I text her, but they're this off of you.
About to have vacation.
I don't know. Well, we will tentatively look at the first and then get back to me if that's going to be, if that's going to be a problem. As far as administrative reports, just some numbers for the district for May. Again, you have all of this in your, in your packet, but the administrators are not here during the months of June and July. Elementary school, they finished with 479 as their enrollment, 95% attendance. Mr. Rogers wanted to emphasize the fourth grade talent show, which I'm sure was phenomenal. I didn't get a chance to go over there and watch it, but fourth graders showing off their talent has to be a good time. Middle school finished with 351, 93% attendance. They had tons of field trips at the end of the year, which is always fun. And then a lot of end-of-year testing, which Mr. Wagner is going to go over here in just a few minutes. High school finished 377, 93% attendance. And spring sports went beyond the end of school, which that's usually a good thing when you've got kids participating after school ends. Track did really well. Malena Wilson was all-state and also Mackenzie Collins was, was she all-state as well?
Qualified.
Qualified, yeah, qualified for state and they both did a phenomenal job. And then our golf team took second in the state, just right there. They had the, they were in the first place position right at the end of, of the day, but didn't quite finish it. But still a second place finish, it's our highest ever finish for golf, one of our, one of our better sports really. If you look at the wall at Mupper Gym, we've had a lot of success in golf and those, those boys did a really great job. And Coach Johnson and the boys had a good write-up in the paper this week. And then softball made it to the final four in, in class two and played the top team in the state diamond in the semifinal round. And had a 3-1 lead on them in the fifth and unfortunately had a bad fifth inning and finished fourth in the state. But still a great run by all three of our track, our softball, and our golf teams. So really fun way to end the school year. Summer school, our enrollment is 441 and that covers elementary, middle school, and high school. Elementary and middle school is enrichment, a lot of pool time, a lot of getting some kids caught up and where they need to be. And then high school is purely credit recovery, not a lot of fun in high school during summer. But they're getting some credits made up and hopefully getting back on track to graduate, so.
And that number is a year-to-date. We have some students who will be receiving credit in SAE that are, when lots of projects are finished. They're not, they're not in that number.
Yeah, we can still count them for summer school enrollment, even though they're not in the traditional summer school program. So FFA kids doing SAE projects, athletes doing weights.
Yeah.
We're able to count those as well and receive some, some kickback for that, so that works out pretty well. You can see the kids walk into the pool.
They crack me up.
See those first graders walking up there with their shirts off. They're living their best life, walk into the pool.
Cracks me up.
All right, that's, that's my administrative report. Anybody has any questions about any of that?
In looking over all of the different schools' attendance and so on, we've all lost students through the, through the year. And that's just something that I think we need to continue to look at and if there's something we can do.
Yeah.
To prevent that loss.
And it's, you know, I'm talking to a lot of people, it's a statewide.
Sure.
Problem, that drop in enrollment and people just choosing other forms of, of education. But yeah, we want to do everything we can to attract kids to come to our public school.
Yep, just making that a matter of conversation with the administrative team.
Definitely, definitely, we want to, we want kids and we want them, that person, the attendance percentage is important too, we want them here.
Yep.
And those are pretty good numbers.
It's like 1,207 total, I think, is that kind of?
Yeah, I mean, that's all part, yeah, we just can't do that math that quick in my head, but.
That is kind of kindergarten, I guess.
The elementary school.
Yes, okay.
And pre-K as well.
407.
Oh, and, yeah.
And you say this next year we get to count preschool.
Yes, we'll be able to count preschool in our ADA, which is one of the nicer things out of Centerville 727. Okay. Next on the agenda is proposed meal prices for FY '25. The only change to meal prices is the lunch, the student lunch will need to go up 10 cents to 250 instead of 240. We already cranked up the adult lunch, that's why we don't have to do that. But Regina does a good job of keeping, keeping us right where we need to be as far as those lunch prices. So we're not looking to make a ton of money, we just need to be able to get the reimbursement back from the state to be good. So that just changes with however the state deems it. So we need to raise that 10 cents to 250. Everything else will stay the same.
All right.
All right, and we will next go to Mr. Wagner.
All right. I have two handouts to give you, one usually including your packet with the, with the scorecard and I fail to do that. So it's just the explanation of each category. Tonight I am not going to go over absolutely everything on the, on the scorecard because most of it I went over with you in February. So, so I'm not going to rehash unless you have questions. I'm not going to rehash anything that has not changed since the February meeting. And so just to give you, give you a reminder, just more to jog your memory than anything, the layout of the scorecard. In the first, in the first column of the scorecard, you have the C-SIP goal that, that, that the, that the measure covers. Everything in here is tied back to a C-SIP, a C-SIP goal or goal or, or an objective within the, within the C-SIP plan. And then, and then the actual description of each measure. If you look at the first, what, eight rows, talk about the MAP test. We do not have MAP test scores yet. I am hoping that, I'm hoping that with an earlier release of our, of our IMSIP scores this year, that we will be able to go over MAP scores a little bit earlier. I'm crossing my fingers I can do that in August, but I don't be surprised we have to do it in January. So it seems to be a moving target from year to year, what, when we can actually present that publicly. So all data that you see on here is as of June 1st. So, so this is the most recent data I can, that I can give to you. The first, the first thing I want to, I want to go over with you, start with line nine, our ACT composite score. I'm fairly confident it's going to be about 18.1. This is the, the average ACT score for all of our seniors who just graduated in class of 2024. If you notice that it is down a little bit, but that also goes along with the trends of that class. Traditionally, if you look at their MAP scores, their EOC scores, that class has been, has been a little bit lower than, than most on their, on their proficiency in, in, on the MAP and EOC. So I'm not surprised that we took a little bit of a dip on our ACT composite score.
And that score is only seniors.
That's only seniors, yeah, yeah. I could, if I was to give an average score of everybody who took the test just this year, it'll probably, I think it's around 18.7, 18.8. So I'd have to, I'd have to double-check that, but I believe that, and we, and this year we tested all of our juniors. Their data would be reflected in 2025 on this, on this particular row, so. Now, the ACT work keys, that is a, that is a version, I don't want to say it's a version of the ACT, but instead of measuring college readiness like the ACT does, this measures career readiness. And, and everybody that, that takes the test and scores at a certain level gets a, gets a certificate. It's called the NCRC certificate. And, and this, so this row represents the number of students, this would be juniors by the way, that took the, took the ACT work keys and earned a certificate. We had three students, I believe we had eight that actually took the work keys. The rest of them took, the rest of those juniors took the ACT this year. And so the ones that earned them, by the way, did very well. I think we had two that earned silver and I, we've never had two of those three earn a silver certificate, which we've never had more than one earn, earn silver, okay? And so I was, I was very happy with that. We had several that were within just a few points of, of just earning a certificate period. So I was, I was very proud of what those eight students did. The next one down, lines 11 and 12, those represent your, the I-Ready scores. That's one of our measurements of improvement in reading and math. And I showed this to you back in February, but the 56 and 52% represent those who had reached their, who reached their target, I guess you could say, for improvement based off of their baseline score. And it looks, this is, this is showing just an example of two, of two data points for a student. And you can see that they scored, this was their baseline score and they improved eight points from their first to second test. But they're, and they were on their way to what's called the typical growth line. If somebody who scored at this level on, on the first test usually scores this 595 by the end of the school year, okay? And the, and the typical growth line varies by student based off of where they, where they scored on the first test. So 56% of our students that reached in grades, uh, grades one through eight, reached their typical growth line by the end of, by the end of school on, in, in reading and 52% in math. We broke even between 2023 and 2024 in math and we went up a percent in 2024 in reading, okay? Talked about attendance a while ago and if you want to know our, our K through 12 attendance, 93.77 is what we wound up with. We were at 94, right at the 94 mark for, for quite a while. As a matter of fact, it was, it was at 94, 24 in February and went down half a percent. There were various reasons why we had absences between February and May. Nothing that was really, that we could really pinpoint saying this was, we had a lot of sickness or whatever. I mean, there wasn't really anything. And on your, on your balance, on your scorecard, you know, you notice you have two fields that are yellow. When we, four-year graduation rate and our dropout rate, our dropout number. I usually use our official data after we submit our June Moses data, our June cordata data to DSE. And we have not completed that yet. We have until the end of the month to turn that in, or I have until the end of the month to turn that in. And, and once, once they have, once it's processed over a weekend, I usually have the, have that data ready. So I can have that to you, have those numbers either to you through Dr. Spence in July or if I get to present MAP data in August, I'll, I'll bring that to you then. Do you guys have any questions about this data before I move on?
Yeah, like on the I-Ready stuff, what would be like a, do we have a district goal of what we would like that to be, like in a perfect world?
Oh, I'd love for it to be 100%, I mean, that'd be a perfect world, but.
Do other schools in the conference do I-Ready?
Yes, six or seven of them do. And I don't, we don't talk, we don't generally talk about.
Those numbers.
This metric in particular. This is the best metric I could put in a snapshot that relates back to those two C-SIP, or that C-SIP goal of 1.1.
And that, but also if you read that right, 56, like the 56% there, that doesn't mean that 44% didn't make any progress.
Right.
They couldn't make progress, they just didn't make the normal progress that they should make.
And I-Ready determines where that should be based off the test.
Correct, and they have years and years of data to back that up with.
So speaking of a moving target.
Yeah, it does, it does move from year to year and.
For student to student.
Yeah, as, as they ever receive more data and they go, and, and right now, they probably, they have so much data now. I mean, they've been, they've had I-Ready, Accredilum Associates, which is the company that has, has had an I-Ready for, I want to say 12, 13 years now. And so they, they not only serve Missouri, but they serve many other states. So they, they, they pull all that data together and, and come up with kind of that typical, the typical growth line, so.
Do they have any comparable information from all of that data that you reference our school district against?
No, I don't.
They don't have any?
No.
It does look like it's a group compared to pre-COVID.
Yes, yes, and, and that's, and that's what I'm most encouraged about. And by the way, I think I'm, after this year, I'm going to drop these two columns off of here because I think we can start comparing to all post-COVID now per se, so.
And so how do teachers, administrators use this data?
Now, the teachers use a different set of data, mostly to, to look at gaps in skills between, in reading and in math. So they, they get a report that says that this student may not be able to add two-digit numbers effectively at a proficient rate. They may, and it varies from student to student. So this really helps us, if they're, if they're grade level or two below, they can, our interventionists can take the data they get from those reports to help try to bring them up to grade level.
And do teacher groups or teams get together and look at this data and then?
Yes.
Say, okay, this is something we need to be working on or, you know?
Yes, especially, especially if there is something, if there's a standard in particular, just like the MAP test.
Right.
If there's a, if there's a standard that they see significant gaps in, they may go back and reteach even just to make sure that they are, or if they haven't taught it yet, they make sure that they make an emphasis when it does come up.
That math, that's, we're on the first year of that new series.
Yes.
And we broke, we didn't lose, so I consider that kind of a win.
Right, and what I'm going to, and what I'm going to show you here in a minute is going to be a little bit more of an expanded version of, of what we're seeing here. And you can see a little bit more graphically how our students are, have improved from one, one test to the next throughout the course of the year. They took most of our grade levels from one through eight, took the test three times, kindergarten, it took it two times.
So like on the math section, just I think Mac said this, but like, so it, it's specific, like if long division for a fourth grader or something, if that's the area they're struggling in, then the teacher will know that based off the data they get from the kids taking the test and they can pinpoint that, right?
Correct, correct. And, and sometimes, sometimes they'll get that, they'll receive that data, like if it's long division in fourth grade, that may not, that, that may be a fifth grade standard, for example. So it may be something that they, if they're, if they're, if they're testing into, into, if they're receiving questions from fifth grade, that's something that we don't worry too much about because that means that they're probably going to score high, if they're a fourth grade, they're probably going to score high fourth or maybe into fifth grade, so, yeah. All right. One of the things that we did not have in February was our number of students attaining English proficiency. The, our, mostly our students, our, our students that are being served by Ms. Rickard and Ms. Kate or Ms. Sergey up in, through our ELL program. They all have these, this, this group of 52 students-ish, some of that numbers went down actually because some people moved. But, but anyway, they took, they all took the access test in January and February and it tested their, their English skills in reading, speaking, and listening, writing. And I can't remember the last one right offhand. But anyway, those students, we had eight, eight of the 52 students who took the test score at a, score at, in, at the English proficiency cut line or above. And we haven't had that number since, you know, we have to go back to 2019 to find a comparable number.
And that year there was 20 more students too.
Yes, yes, so I, I mean, if you look at the, you know, the rate, yeah, we have a higher rate this year than we even did in 2019. And so those students will, those eight students will go on monitored status. Six of them were in elementary, two were in middle school. And they will go on monitored status for, for the next four years, which means they will, they won't receive services. But we will keep a close eye on them and make sure that they are doing well enough. And if they seem to be going backwards, we won't hesitate to put them back into the program where they would start receiving services once again in the area that they seem to be the weakest, so. Dropout to mention a while ago, we'll have that after our June date. Our district mobility rate, you can see, went down quite a bit. We're going back to almost a COVID number, it seems like. But this goes back to what you guys were talking about a while ago with low enrollment. And, and the fact that this year, we are, our total number of students in who have either, who have, have been enrolled at least one day in our district was significantly, significantly lower than what it has been in probably 10 years and, or more. And, but anyway, it's, we didn't have a lot of movement in general. I mean, there were times that we, we, we would get a rush of kids, but then there were times that, I mean, we'd go several weeks without having a new student enter our, enter our district. And, and so that, that accounts for our district mobility rate. Didn't have a lot of students move in, we didn't have a lot of students move out. And so compared to prior years.
And that helps to have that, you want that number as low as you can be because if you've got kids moving in and moving out, it makes it hard to, to get that I-Ready data and to make, you know, for the system to fit, we need kids that are going to be here for a while.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just good for the kids to have consistent.
Stability.
So they got the stability in their education. Last data, I'm going to, piece of data I'm going to show you is our, I'm sorry, is our free and reduced lunch rate. And I did verify this with Regina earlier today, we were at right about 59% free and reduced lunch. About time of COVID, we start, we started to see a dip. That was about, this was about the time that we were, everybody was having a free lunch. So there were, you know, people didn't see the need in filling out applications. It's gradually went back up because people have started filling out applications a lot more. We're going to, we are making a change in that this year, we're going to make, we're going to put it on parent portal, the application itself. And so anybody can log in, fill out, fill out the form. And, and then we, within, within 24 hours, we will, that parent through portal will know their eligibility. Now, we will, July 1, we will have some, several based off the food stamp program and other, and SNAP-TANF and, and then through the foster care system will come in as direct certification. They will automatically be, without filling out a form, receiving free lunches first day of school, so. And that number is usually around 35 to 40%, the rest of them are applications. So anyway, and also 2019 and 2020, we saw, started seeing a dip, not only because of COVID, but there were changes in the rules and they upped the threat, the poverty threshold. And so a lot of people went off of free, or lost their eligibility for free or reduced lunches, so. All right, any other, any questions before I, I'm going to try to briefly go over the other I-Ready data? One.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that our September enrollment was 11.92 and what'd you say, we ended at 12.07, so we have a.
That bodes well because, yeah, September enrollment's the big, that's the big one, that, that's the one that counts for everything. So hopefully we can bring those kids back and have that higher count in September.
You're receiving a packet of I-Ready data, I am going to go over, I'm, I'm just going to present building-wide data. I'm not going to, yeah, I gave you grade level data. One thing that we have to caution ourselves on, anytime we talk about grade level data, we get, when we get into the upper grades, we get to the point that we have only one teacher teaching reading or one teacher teaching math. And so, so I hate to talk specifically about one grade levels, a grade level of data because we are all of a sudden targeting a teacher rather than a group of teachers. So, so I, I'm just giving you that for, the grade level data for your reference only. But, but I am, I do want to, I do want to go over each building here. You see three, you see three pieces of data for elementary reading up here on the, up here on the board. We also have that in your packet. The top, the top, the top line represents students, the students who took the test in the fall. That was usually September, around Labor Day, a couple of weeks after that usually. Some, some people, some got into October. Middle represented December to, late, mid to late December going into Christmas break or January. And then most of our, most of our grade levels took their, took their test in the spring, in March or April. Usually they tried to, they usually tried to beat the MAP test if they were a MAP-tested area. But if they are in the elementary, they have to try to, they have to test their, because of state law now, they have to test within three weeks of the end of school. So that, some of theirs may have been late April, early May. So if you, as you see in elementary, the great. So if you see in elementary, the green is good, red is bad, I mean, that's kind of the way, the way to sum it up, but if they're in the red, they're at least two grade levels below, there's a, there's kind of a design pattern in red over here at the far edge, those are students who are three grade levels or more below, and I'm going to, I always have the question, how can you be three grade levels more below if you're a kindergartner, okay? You could be one grade level or below, or more below in kindergarten, because there is a level called emerging K, which is kind of like a pre-K level in IREDDI, and and so we have students who, in kindergarten, for example, that scored that, at that level. So kindergarten would not have this red mark, but they do have students who are either in green or yellow.
Is it, is this all students, does this include special ed and?
Yes.
Everything?
Unless they're eligible, like, like they're eligible for MAP A, which is the alternate map test if they have severe disabilities.
Right. And this is K through?
K through four.
Four, yeah.
Yes. Now, if you look, if you were to do the map on the middle numbers here, or on the middle test, it's significant, it's significantly lower than the first or third. Kindergarten did not test within this window, okay? They got as late into the first window as they possibly could, they did not test the second window, okay? So if you look, the idea is, is we go through the, through the course of the year, we want, we want this green line to come back this way, back toward me, and so you could see we were on that trajectory. Even more impressive in my mind is that this red shrunk significantly. We started with 23% of our students who are, who are at least two grade levels below, and and we finished the year with 10%, okay? We have, for most of this 10%, we have some sort of reading success plan for them if they are not special ed, or they're receiving special ed services already, or they may be receiving English language services, okay? So so that's the general idea, so you can see we were trending, we had, we have a good trend between data points in in the green as well as in the red. This is elementary math, same thing, you can see we started really low in, on the green side, really high on the red side, but we flipped that over the course of the year. And once again, math numbers a little bit lower because kindergarten did not test in this, in this, in the second window.
So Chris, they're bottom, these are at the end of the year, so that means 54% of elementary kids were at grade level or above, correct?
Correct, correct. And then we had 40% who were one grade level, and some of them may have been within, there were many in elementary that were within maybe one or two questions away from being in the green area, they're just kind of bubble, on the bubble of making grade level, so. So yeah, we did have a few where they were kind of on the low end of the yellow, but but we had several that were just, just right, right in here, so. All right. And then going to middle school, you kind of see, kind of see the same trend, okay? Now, one of the things I'm going to caution you on in middle school is, is that the higher you get in, the higher, the higher the grade level, the, sometimes you have a less enthusiasm of taking the test, let me just put it that way.
What?
And yeah, yeah, so if you've ever had a seventh or eighth grader, you probably know what I'm talking about, and so, so you might not see as great a gains, and and one of the things that are, all of our teachers are really good about is looking at the data after they take the test, and IREDDI does a good job of flagging students who rushed through the test. And so it's not uncommon for us to have three or four kids that we retest within a window just because they rushed through it the first time, so. So yeah, we, you may not see quite the gains that you see in elementary, in in middle school. Now, one thing I will say about middle school math is that in sixth grade, you have a significant change in standards. You go from more foundational math to algebra, ratios and proportions, a lot more geometry, and so, but the math becomes a lot more complex in sixth grade, so you may not see, as you, you may not see the great gains in seventh and eighth grade that you would see, say, in second grade. So, but you could see as we went through, the green went up, the red went down, and what I, and this is what I was talking about a while ago, we didn't see a lot of red go down, and the red didn't go down very significantly in middle school from the second to third window in math, and once again, I I honestly think it's because, it might have been because kids were starting to shut down about the time that that they were taking the, taking the test and not taking it as seriously as they should.
Is it, like, just kind of, and sorry to back up on you.
Yeah.
To go back to the middle school reading, so if we go all the way back to the elementary reading, and you see this green is very small, that our elementary teachers are getting our kids more on grade level, because as they come into middle school, you see the introductory in the fall is significantly at a more proficient rate when they start than, you know, it was, what was it, 4% or whatever?
Right.
When they're, when they tested in elementary, and this is showing 11 and 21%.
Right.
So we're getting them more caught up, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah, the foundational skills are there, and our, our elementary does a really good job of of laying down those, laying down those skills.
Okay, I want to make sure I was.
Yes.
And you know, you have to consider just the the concepts themselves, I mean, it's just, it is, it's harder once you get to those upper grade levels to continue that that progress like we would want to see there. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be there, but it it does become more challenging for kids.
One of the things I want to emphasize in, I've got to go back to elementary math real quick, well, if I can get this to go, there we go. I, I, I was talking with one of our grade levels right at the end of school, last week of school, as a matter of fact, and they were saying, they were, they were very thankful they had the math series that they, they purchased last year, and and they, they have seen, they have seen great gains in, you know, just those aha moments that the students are having, they can see that they're getting it, it's not as stressful on the teachers, and and I think it's, I think that was a positive change that we made this year, so. So, and and we can see it in our data as we go through the year.
That's really good information to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Considering what you, what everybody goes through, whether the price and everything, you get that change, it's good feedback.
Like on the middle school reading?
Yes.
I mean, is there some kind of game plan to get the 70 students that are three or more grade levels below, like, caught up? I mean, or, I just.
Well, they.
That seems concerning to me, I don't.
What grade?
Middle school reading.
Whole, whole middle school.
Yeah. I mean, that's almost a whole class.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess my question would be like, how many of them are special ed or need more attention than?
Yeah, I don't know.
There could be some factors in there that.
Yes.
I don't know if that's.
Yeah, and.
But but still, but wouldn't their baseline be lower, though, when they started?
I don't.
Well, yes, I mean, they, they were probably, several, several of our special ed students were probably in one of these two red categories to start off with, and they may have finished in one of these two categories at the end of the year, and.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not out to get anybody, I'm just questioning, like, what do we do about that?
What's the process?
Right, well, if they are, and I wish Dr. Johnson was here to help me explain this, if, but if they are, if they are in any of these, a combination of their IREDDI scores and their MAP scores, if they are below a certain level of proficiency, they do, we do have an intervention time in math and in reading, they receive a quarter of, one quarter of the school year, they receive some sort of intense intervention in one of those two areas, depending on what the captain qualifies, and some qualify for both.
I mean, we did go down what, 38 students, so I mean, that's good, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Well, I know middle school, this was their first year for that RTI.
Yes.
Program, so Dr. Johnson's, I mean, they're, they saw a lot of gains last year, but hopefully that'll get some more traction, and I know they've got some plans for, for all of those students that fall in that red, individualized plans on how to get them up to that next grade level.
Because that's a pretty important subject.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it's.
You can't even get a job, you know?
Yeah, it's showing, you know, 66 or 67% are one grade level below.
Yeah, and like he said, that could be one question for being in the proficient.
Sure.
But the ones that are three grade levels behind are probably more than.
Yeah, two even, yeah.
Right.
Isn't it a little unusual, though, for the being struggling in reading and math? Uh, there's a, well, we have 77 students in math and two or more grade levels, and we got 110 in reading, isn't that, and it usually the other way around?
Usually, yes.
Yeah, because, because a lot of times math is, is more reading-intensive, but at the same time, IREDDI as well as MAP tests, we can provide, we can provide a, we can provide a computer reader, text-to-speech reader for them in that subject, because we don't want reading to necessarily be a.
Cause of factor.
Factor in the math score, yes, yes.
Are we using them right for some for, for our reading or English, or we need to look somewhere else?
And I, I believe we, we are, because fifth and sixth grade is using the exact same series as, as K through four is using, and it, and they, but they've only had it a couple of years, and we've had some turnover in those positions as well. So there's, there are a couple of factors with that, with, with, with that. In seventh and eighth grade, they have, they go more from reading, teaching reading to teaching writing and preparing them for high school. So eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade may not see as, as creative gains, just because they're not receiving, as the class universally, they're not receiving reading instruction per se. They may read, but they're not learning how to read necessarily.
And it might be good for us to hear from some of the teachers about the RTI, what they're doing and successes they're having, struggles they're having.
Cause I think.
Yeah, we could.
We're missing something, yeah, so.
Cause it doesn't look like it's getting any better.
Yeah, and Dr. Johnson would be the first to to say that, yeah, I mean, that's a focus, I know that's a focus, that's where we're, we're spending a lot of time and energy right now. Hopefully, you know, next year, when, when Mr. Wagner's back doing this, you're going to see some more gains in those areas. And you also, I mean, not, that is the focus, that's what we're going to be working on as we should, but there's also different cohorts that come through that are, you know, some grades are just stronger and some grades are weaker.
Sure.
So you have to take that into account, but but certainly that data and that trend shows that reading for sure is a place that, and I know I've had multiple conversations with, with Dr. Johnson and other, Mrs. Schmidt and other people at the middle school on how we can improve that, so that's a focus for next year.
And this highlights the problem that we've always had of whenever kids go from grade level to grade level and are not ready for that next grade level.
Right.
And so those lack of skills that they have just gets exacerbated as they get older.
And this appears, I mean, I don't know, to be a great diagnostic tool to figure all this out.
It is, yeah.
It's really good stuff.
It is.
Yeah, we're not, we're not happy with that, we're not like, hey, that's good stuff, no, we're, we're going to, we're going to focus in and try.
I mean, and the kids that are doing great, that's great, you know?
Sure. Most of them just came between a couple of grades here.
And, and we, I mean, as a whole, I mean, I, I am, even though the, like I said, the great gains aren't as great in middle school as they are in elementary, but we do see that trend from, from test one to test three.
And that difference between elementary and middle school has always been there.
Yes.
Part of the age, you know, the, the target gets harder all the time as they get older, and and it gets harder to make up that difference that they, where they have fallen behind, and.
Well, there's, there's no way to educate a fat home life, you know, you might have a kid that's struggling, but it may not be, you know, it may not be the teacher that's having an issue, you can just do something, you know, there's craziness going on in this house.
And that shows up greater as they get older.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Yep. I'm, maybe anybody else, but I would like to see this next year, not necessarily the baseline, I don't think when you see the baseline, but I'd like to see it on the second test and then the third test, if that's doable next year.
I mean, that's doable, and it falls in, with, when I do this as well, the score bar as well, so.
You're saying, take the baseline out of it?
Well, we don't, I don't know why we.
Just get it updated.
A baseline, I don't know what tells anything, but the second, the third test can tell more, right?
And that second window will be open by the time, or I'm sorry, be closed by the time we go into the mark, our February meeting, so I, that, that would be a perfect time for me.
Definitely able to see the trajectory, that things are kind of all.
Yeah, I can do that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. All right, Chris, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Policy committee.
Very good. Policy revisions, the committee met, and these are the revisions that we're, we're looking at, I'll just go over those briefly, and if you're on the committee or not, you can feel free to weigh in on any of these, but EHBD is artificial intelligence, AI, that sets the framework for creating a district AI use plan with an AI district coordinator, who I would propose to be the tech director, maybe the obvious choice for that AI district coordinator. This is something an MSP suggests that we get in place, and that's a, that's definitely going to be a living document, and we'll be working through that and revising it each year as it continues to become a, a bigger and bigger thing in education. Right now, the focus is really on using it to cheat and that kind of thing, but the use will just continue to grow as the years goes on. BDA is for board meetings, and that's our local policy, that would move the time of monthly meetings from seven to six, we'd never done that, so we probably should, it still says seven o'clock, so we probably need to fix that to six. BBBA, board member qualifications, reflects state change, the patrons must reside in a district for at least one year before being eligible to run for the board. In the past, you could own property in a district and, and move there and immediately run for the board, but the, the new change in the law, you've got to at least be in that district for one year, residing in that district. BBF, board ethics, policy wording change to reflect in SEP 6, so there's just some word change to make sure the policy matches what we have to do within SEP. And then GDBDA is staff leave, that is a policy change that I would like to make from 10 sick and two personal days to 12 days of paid time off. So instead of having 10 sick and two personal, it's just 12 days that staff can, can take how they, I think, that's something we've talked about for several years, that's something that the staff and administrators are all supportive of, and I think it would be a, a nice thing for our staff just to have those, those 12 days instead of people making up illnesses to get those two days, yeah. Those are the revisions I would bring before the board tonight.
Any discussion of, or questions concerning any of those?
I, I mean, other than, I mean, on the artificial intelligence, so.
Yeah.
I got, I'd like to ask Andrew, like, what, what are we, what, what are we looking at here? I mean, I know they're using it for cheating and stuff like that, but what's, what's, what's the future of artificial intelligence look like at Willow Springs School?
In 30 seconds or less, Andrew. Okay, so, that policy is very similar to just all of our policies that have to do with any data, you know, so a lot of that is like, you know, we don't want to put data out to AI that's going to get out. The big thing you worry about with AI is you can train it, I don't know if you've seen the classic example of the girl, the Middle Eastern girl with green eyes, you can ask AI to generate that, there's only one image that really qualifies under that, it's really popular from Time Magazine, it'll spit out almost that exact image. So if we have services that use AI, it could pull in our student data, and if you ask the AI for, hey, could you give, pretend you're a seventh grade boy in middle school, first name Josiah, last name Corson, what do you think you would have gotten for your semester grade in math? And it was trained on data from the Willow Springs School, it would probably spit that out. So, so we've got to like, make sure that we have ideas of how our data is being used, our vendors, how they're using our data and stuff like that. So that's more along with that policy is talking about, is more like our student data.
Protection.
No, I mean, we do definitely need to address what students are doing with it, but this policy, as far as what I've read, is more aimed at how the data is being used with AI. Because, yeah, I mean, we do have a whole different side of the equation about students. Because, yeah, I mean, we do have a whole different side of the equation about students using it, and I think there's a bunch of risks there. I mean, it could threaten the entire paper writing process and what you'd even view as, a lot of academic papers have like been faked with AI. I mean, there's words that only AI uses and those are becoming more and more popular because people are turning in documents written by AI. So it's becoming like in academia at all levels, an issue. So, I mean, that's something we have to address, but I don't think that's what this policy is looking at.
What this policy, what we're fixing to vote on and approve is more about protecting the data.
Protecting our data that we have, so.
And you're, you're comfortable with?
Uh, yeah, I mean, most, like I told Marty, most of this was already kind of covered with the other policy, but I think it's good to set this aside as like its own issue because it will become that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm scared of that.
It's fascinating, but terrifying, yeah.
They're like deer in headlights.
Most, uh, newspaper articles, magazine articles are written.
Posts.
Are, are written by, uh.
AI-generated.
A lot of the narrations on videos.
Our teaching will be AI in short order, probably.
I hope not.
No, yeah, me too.
Yeah. All right, uh, anything else, uh, before we go on to budget?
I'll get up. Make it a little more professional. Um, so quick budgetary notes before we get into the, uh, the budget for FY twenty-five. Just want to talk about the current budget quickly and I gave you guys kind of a heads up on this. Um, has to do with our middle school HVAC project, which was under the ESER banner, um, that we talked about, hey, once we get that done, we're going to pay that off. We have not paid that off yet. We have funds to pay off our debt services with UMB for the middle school HVAC. That debt right now is just a little over one point five million, so we have that money, but that's not paid off to date. Our first payment on that debt was in April of twenty-four. So we have two options and I've worked with, uh, with Dr. Forrest and Denny Thomas, our auditor. We called Desi today to make sure that, that both of these options are, are feasible and it's not something that we need to decide necessarily tonight, uh, but it's something I want you to be aware of and, and be thinking about for, for a future decision. Uh, the first option would be pay the debt off. That's what we talked about doing back in Mr. Hall's time when we, when we talked about this originally. This would lower our unrestricted fund balance because that money is coming out of, of all of our money that's sitting in the bank right now in the short term, but the district would then be debt-free and we wouldn't be paying that, that debt off. So that's option one. Option two is keep the funds that would be used to pay the debt in the bank and continue to make payments on the loan. Um, we pay two point five percent interest and we're drawing five percent interest right now with the money that's sitting in the bank. So that one point five, seven five is sitting in the bank, drawing some good interest for us. If we take that out, we lose that, that interest that we would be gaining there. Uh, that results in approximately forty thousand dollars a year in revenue. It's roughly a teacher's salary a year that we're gaining off having this money in the bank. Um, ESER, three funds must be spent before December twenty-four, so to make this option work, we would need to reclassify some completed projects or salary as ESER. In order to pay for the HVAC with this money, we would need to do some roofing, some bus purchases, some things like that with the ESER money, um, which our auditor said is absolutely fine and, um, he would recommend that we do option two because it's beneficial financially to the district. So those are two options that, uh, that we have to work with, with that, with that debt service.
Is that forty thousand though, doesn't that go down the more you pay?
I mean. It would, yeah, like if you take, if you take that out, you're not getting, like that's.
Yeah, I mean, every.
Yes, every year that would drop, so at some point.
It's not forty thousand every year.
Right, right. At some point, we probably would just want to say, okay, we're ready just to pay it off at this point, but for, for a year or two, we're going to be getting that, you know, forty thousand or close to.
And you're, when you talk about buses and, and roofs and stuff, you're talking about previous projects.
Previous purchases, reclassifying that as ESER instead of just out of our general budget.
So you can just roll the money back in, gain that interest even longer?
No, I mean, at some point, you'd, yeah, you, you got to work it down.
How much was our payment to you?
To, to UMB?
Our, our payments, like you said, we made our first.
It's like two hundred, two hundred thousand, something in that range. So.
Nearly?
Yeah, yeah. And I think it goes to twenty-three-two is the loan expiration. Something to think about? I know that's, that's a lot, so we can talk about that again in July or we can talk about it at the board retreats more. This is not something we have to take action on tonight, but it is something that I wanted to put that out for the entire board to, to kind of know where we're at on that because that's a big number and there's, you know, two viable options and I can see both sides of, of that option, but I wanted to give you that and give you some time to think about it. Any questions before I move on to the future budget? So FY twenty-five budget salary benefits proposal, we've talked about this last month as well and went into way more detail last month. Um, wanted to get to the end of the budgetary year as close as we can before we actually make a move on this and, um, after running numbers with, um, with Dr. Forrest and others, I feel like this is, this is the way we need to go. It's a little more conservative than what we've done in the past as far as salaries and benefits, um, and I hate that for our teachers. We would all love to give big salary increases, uh, but I think where we're currently at, um, this gives everybody a little bump without being, uh, irresponsible with our money. One percent for all employees, so that'd be classified and, um, certified employees. Raise the district health insurance contribution by thirteen dollars, um, to cover the two percent raise in insurance. This would move the district contribution to four ninety-eight fifty. Add an additional salary step at year twenty-one with a master's. Cost of that impact is approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. And just a reminder there at the end that legislation now has the Missouri baseline salary grant at forty thousand. Our current step one is thirty-five, three, seven, eight. That's before the one percent increase. Um, this grant will cover the difference of all teachers that are below forty thousand. It would bump them up to forty. Um, and then the future of the grant, as I've told you before, is, is very uncertain. That's a year-to-year grant. So our teacher salary schedule, this is the current schedule. You see the thirty-five, three, seventy-eight, the step that we put in last year, it's step nineteen. And then this would be our proposed salary schedule, I guess, at thirty-five, seven, twenty-two. And then we now have the additional step at twenty-one for those teachers that have their masters and they've been here twenty-one years. Those are our veteran, um, teachers and it's not a huge bump, but it is a little something for them at that, at that twenty-one year.
And didn't you tell us when we did the last bump that that was the first bump in the schedule since like you've even been employed here?
Yeah, 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 it had been a long, long time.
Have you seen the impact of that step? I mean, do we, have you felt the impact of putting that step in at this point, uh, the one you did last year?
Felt financially or felt as far as climate and culture?
Financially.
Financially, yes. No, I mean, I, there, that is a minimal, minimal impact on the district budget.
And you expect the same for this?
And I expect the same for this one, and I did get a lot of very positive feedback from some of our veteran teachers that were very grateful that they did now have a little, a little bump down the line.
Something.
It's not much, but it's, it's something. Okay, that's all I had on the budget.
Um, part of that, um, did, did they require a minimum for masters on, in this new law?
Yes, but that's not the current, like.
I just happened to think.
Yeah, there was something, Senate Bill seven twenty-seven had a, a master's, there's a master's provision in there that like a master's has to be at least, and I can't.
Forty-six, is it forty-six?
Forty-five or forty-six, somewhere in that area, um, but that will not, that's not for the FY twenty-five.
Okay.
That'll be for FY twenty-six because all that Senate Bill seven twenties, that, that won't go into law for this current fiscal year.
Could you real quick look and see where we're at right now?
Yeah.
For masters, say.
Well, this would be the proposed one, so your masters, I mean, we would still have like the first, we'd have to bump it up for the first ten years to get them to, to forty-five if the number's forty-five, um, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be significant and I don't know if that would be a grant program as well.
But that would happen in twenty-six.
Yes, yeah, that's not happening in twenty-five. But it's kind of, teacher salaries are, are the big, the big talk of, of the state right now. Deservedly so.
But we have a teacher now, new first-year teacher this, next year, makes forty thousand, right?
Yep.
Well, they just stay at forty thousand, right?
Yeah.
They just stay there.
They will stay there until they hit something bigger on our salary schedule.
Or until the state raises it.
Or until the state says.
Which will be essentially year eight.
Yeah, yeah, that's crazy. And that's, that's compression and that's not fair to the teacher that, you know.
But we didn't create that.
But unfortunately, we still want to take care of, you know, we want to take care of every teacher the best way we can, um, and we'll, we'll continue to do that.
All right, you've got a teacher with masters that are nineteen years or seventeen years and are making nine thousand dollars more than starting to.
Right, that, that's not fair, but that's where we're at. And hopefully the state will change the formula at some point and allow districts to be able to, to make it fair for everybody, but unfortunately, they have not done that yet.
Any other questions or comments concerning the budget?
So what we're voting on, we're approving is the, is the.
The salary provisions for the FY twenty-five budget, yes.
About one percent, one step.
And the twelve dollars.
And the twelve dollars.
Insurance, yes.
It'll actually be thirteen.
You don't know what that particular thing costs us.
We've seen that. You gave us that.
Oh, yeah, it's not much.
That's not big.
I think it was last month.
It's pretty minimal, yeah.
Let's review the iPad.
Thirty dollars a month, yes.
So that's a hundred, a hundred and thirty dollars or something.
Hundred forty.
Forty dollars or something.
Forty.
Everybody fifteen. That's, that's all employees up to, right?
Yeah, depending, and that'll vary a little bit depending on where, what insurance package that, that will be, but thirteen.
Any other questions? Then we'll be ready to go on to, I'm.
Your motions.
All right.
I think there's five tonight.
All right, so, uh, to begin with, uh, would, uh, receive a motion to approve meal prices for twenty twenty-five.
So.
As, as presented, uh, earlier.
Motion.
Pardon?
What's that calling?
Right, and the second was, who was the second?
Adam.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then, uh, a motion is needed to amend the FY twenty-four budget to actual spending and revenue.
And we do this every, every June, so we can balance the budget before we hit the next fiscal year.
And the next item of act will be authorizing our superintendent to transfer those funds.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, uh, we need to, uh, take action to authorize a transfer of funds to reconcile the twenty-four budget, so I would receive a motion in that order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now for the, uh, FY twenty-five budget, we looked at the, uh, proposed increase in salary and the step and the insurance. Uh, I would receive a motion to approve the FY twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and then, um, a motion would be in order to approve the policy revisions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?